Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Terry Bates is here from Oklahoma City Faith Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Larry McAtee to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Will you bow your heads and join me in this prayer? Heavenly Father, we recognize that today is a very monumental day for every community, every city, every state, and every nation in this nation. And we just pray that your sovereign guidance would overshadow this great nation and continue to bless us with your favor. We pray for the business of our city. We are pleased to see how you have prospered our city and favored us with great leadership. And we ask you to continue to bless them with the wisdom that leads our city, our community, forward so that we can be a great community, part of a great state, part of a great nation that rests under the shadow of your great blessings. We pray this in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pastor Fine, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, where were you in 1902? If you were Crow and Dunlevy, you were just getting started with the, what is now the oldest law firm in Oklahoma City. We have a special commencement this morning. I'm going to ask Kevin Gordon to come up and be a part of this. And Gail, Lindsey, you want to come up as well? Okay. Lindsey's going to take pictures. Kevin Gordon is with the firm of Crow and Dunlevy at their 110th anniversary of practicing law in Oklahoma City. We have a special proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Crow and Dunlevy is one of the oldest law firms in Oklahoma City, established in 1902 before statehood. Whereas, as one of the largest legal firms in the state, Crow and Dunlevy provides legal services to citizens throughout Oklahoma. Whereas, the firm has an enduring commitment to serving Oklahoma City through community involvement and volunteerism. The firm has been recognized by its peers as one of the state's and the nation's outstanding law firms, representing a variety of clients and businesses. Whereas, the firm's focus on diversity allows attorneys and staff to apply multiple perspectives and creative thinking to find innovative solutions for clients. Whereas, Crow and Dunlevy marks a rich history with its 110th anniversary celebration this year. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim November 6, 2012, as Crow and Dunlevy Day in Oklahoma City.
And let's show our appreciation for 110 years of legal services. Kevin, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You haven't been there the entire time.
Not at all, since 1984.
Well, the firm has certainly seen a lot of changes in this city, and we're proud to have been a part of that. Congratulations to both of you. Thanks for coming down this morning and allowing us to be a part of it.
Thanks very much.
All right. You bet.
Mayor, I think Kevin, Kevin, were you related to Mary Lou Gordon?
I am her son.
That's what we thought. Mary Lou Gordon was a longtime member of the municipal council's office and actually worked with me on the MAPS project. She was the council to the MAPS one project.
And she's still in Oklahoma City.
And she and I worked together on the MAPS for kids' sales tax. We miss her.
Call the meeting to order item 3A, is the appointment of Dr. George Young to the Board of Governors for Nurseries, Daycare Centers, and Daycamps. Comments or questions here? Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Items 3B, C, and D pertain to city management. I'll suggest that we move those items into executive session. We'll have to do them one at a time. Item 3B first. And a second. Cast your votes. That item moves into executive session. How about item 3C? Cast your votes. That item moves to executive session. And item 3D. Cast your votes. And that item moves into executive session as well. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for October 30. And item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for October 23. All right. Comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. And item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, on page nine, under item 8D1, item B 3,000 Northwest 18th Street, we ask that that be stricken to rework for additional structures. And item E 923 Northwest 94th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has repaired. Moving to page 10, under unsecured items, item number 8E1D 904 South Pennsylvania, we ask that that be stricken. We need to rework that one for additional violations. Item N 718 Southeast 40th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item P 1101 Southwest 46th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item S 2732 Southwest 55th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item T 2726 Southwest 62nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item U 3104 Southwest 86th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item V 5801 Northwest 91st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item W 923 Northwest 94th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? Seeing none, we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are six items.
Where's the items?
All right. Comments or questions on the MFA?
Your Honor, I have a question on MFA C. This has to do with a library located in its storefront. And it's a little, I was curious about two things. One is if we did independently verify the fact this competitive lease rate we're paying, and it does have a 2% increase per year as long as we're, as the library.
We weren't actually directly involved in the negotiations on the lease. The lease is actually between the shopping center owners and the library. But we did confirm it's a fair rate. I can't say that it's the best rate that you could get, but it's a fair rate within the market.
Okay. Second question I have is, I want to point out, this is a departure from our policy, a longstanding policy of providing operating facilities to libraries. Generally have provided the buildings, they assume the cost of operating that, in this particular instances, are the least, paying for the lease, but also paying for some of the utilities out there, which is a little different departure from our existing policy. And I have nothing against the library, but I think maybe this, we need to do this very carefully, very deliberately, rather than put it, or man.
Okay. Larry, do you want to comment?
Yeah, just a comment that while this happens to be in Ward 3, it's right on the boundary, being right at the intersection of Southwest 59th and South May. It serves, it's right across the street from Ward, I guess, 4 and 6, and also from Ward 5. David Greenwell and I met with the library folks, and they presented the usage statistics of this particular operation. And the use of this has been just astronomical and very, very gratifying. It serves a need in this particular part of town. And from that standpoint, I think it's an excellent move to provide library services for these people who otherwise would have a real inconvenience trying to get to a library. So David and I are very, very much in favor of it after hearing their presentation. Thank you, Your Honor.
We kind of stumbled into this because we opened this library, as I recall, because we were shutting down another one for an upgrade. And when the upgrade completed, we realized if we closed that other library then, we'd kind of be taking something away that people had come to learn and rely on and enjoy. And it seemed like a pretty reasonable amount of money to continue to open that library as well as the new one. But I think that's something, if we see that the usage of this library goes down with the opening, with the reopening of the new one, I think we ought to look at it again.
If, assuming for a second that the library people are correct, it will be continuing high usage, does that set a precedent? Will we put these into other locations throughout the city?
Well, you know, it's a model that's going well in some other cities in that if you have a shopping center that seems to be going the wrong direction, and some communities have put libraries in there, and it served as a catalyst to help turn an entire shopping center around. So I don't think it's something we should completely ignore if, you know, if it's something that can be new investment in neighborhoods that haven't had them before, and our library is willing to operate them.
Well, I think the concept is excellent. I lived in a town where that was the only library for a long time, storefront library, and it worked out fine. I have no argument with the concept at all, but I do think it's a step that we take very carefully because it is a departure that we've done for a long.
What is our relationship, Jim, on these? Are we paying for the lease on the building?
Yes, we are. And the lease on the building includes utilities. I think that's the point that Mr. Ryan's made.
And the library is paying for the operations inside?
That's correct.
Okay.
I tell you, this library is really, the unexpected return, result is that we need the library there. We, you're right, Mayor, that's why we moved it there. But they did statistical surveys on it, and they found that not only did the usage increase, they did increase from people that weren't using the other library. I mean, a huge increase in.
New demographic.
In use. So while it may drop off a little bit because the other library was closed, it is logical that it could fall back just a little bit. But it's still going to serve a community that wasn't served before. It's a, it's a good.
I think the concept's great. I'll argue about the concept.
I understand.
I like people who read books, think it's pretty important. However, I think when we do something like this, we ought to do it deliberately and with the full knowledge, understanding what we're trying.
Right. Fair enough. And have we voted on the MFA?
No.
Okay. Cast your votes. MFA passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
Move it.
Okay. Voting on the payroll for PPA, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move consent.
I jumped ahead. Hold on. Instead, we're going to convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. So if I reconvene the council meeting, will we adjourn the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where there are two items? All right. Cast your votes on the EAT. Passed unanimously. Now we'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right. Is there any individual consideration on the consent docket?
I would just like to have parts on 6F, Lincoln Park.
Your Honor, I have a question on F as well.
Okay.
And if I could just mention, Mayor, 6M1?
Actually, it's Lincoln Park and Perry Park.
All right. Skip, you want to go first on Lincoln Park, item 6F?
I guess it would probably be Wendell to give us the information as it relates to Lincoln Park.
Good morning.
Wendell, Lincoln Park and Perry Park.
Yes, sir.
Could you tell me what is the projects that's going to be part of this?
Pardon me, sir?
Lincoln Park.
Yes, sir.
Is on 6F?
Yes, sir.
And it's, I'm just trying to find out what the status of each one of these.
Okay.
Lincoln and Perry Park. Do you know?
Lincoln Park, Lincoln Park is a playground. We had to remove the playground that was there some time ago. It was a wooden playground and didn't meet standards and had to be removed. And we're replacing the playground there with a modern playground with proper safety surfacing and such. It'll be on the south end of the park. And Perry is a new pavilion, a picnic pavilion, that will be placed in Perry Park.
Okay. So Lincoln, the playground equivalent would be closer to the?
Somewhat near the tennis court.
The center?
Yes.
The tennis court?
Of course, it's a, it's a small park area, so it'll also still be quite close to the trail, close to the center court, we'll call it, the exercise area. It's not a large area, so everything will be relatively close.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Pat?
I have a question about the item for the Martin Nature Park.
Yes, sir.
As Wendell and I found out last night at a joint meeting between the builders group and friends of Martin Park, there's a lot of contentious still left in that, although I think detected some degree of acceptance by the Martin Nature Park friends with the proposal. What are we doing out at Martin Nature Park here?
For some time, we've had an item in our CIP to construct a new entryway for that park. It's a very important park, as we all know. It's very heavily used. It may be on certain times of the year, a most heavily used park. It has a variety of misplaced, I'll determine, or refer to it as signage. The signage that's there doesn't announce that very important park very well at all. So what we're doing is creating a new entryway and signage, and cleaning up a lot of the signage in that area, and doing a minor amount of landscaping outside of that.
Wendell, do you anticipate that will increase the park?
I think it'll improve or change the image of the park. When you drive up to the park now, it doesn't present the image that we'd like to present. I would not characterize this new entryway as necessarily increasing the usage of the park. No, sir.
Okay, because one of the consensus that was reached last night, or not reached last night, discussed last night, was the fact that the park is close to the passage as far as visitor's concern. And there was a strong comment made that parking facility not be enlarged, because the treaty was that we didn't need to increase the parking park. It's plenty big right now. And so anything that might lead to an increase in patient, I think, very carefully, very thoughtfully, otherwise we're going to be working counter to what the nature of the park really is.
What we'd like to see, Councilman, is that the attendance be spread out a bit more through the week. It tends to be heavy on holidays and heavy on weekends. And if we could have programs and uses of the park being made during the week more, we could, we could serve more while not serving them all at the same time. So that will be a direction on our part. But we are aware that the number of parking spots in a park has an absolute effect on how many people can use it at any one given time.
Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And the consensus, Pat, was that the park has reached its capacity?
Well, the, the.
Visitors?
People who are concerned about it being a nature reserve feel that additional people will disturb the biodiversity of the park, some of the flora and fauna of the park as There was a feeling last night that they, we shouldn't encourage a lot of extra visitors because of the park being so small, such a big building in Oklahoma City being stressed. And I think a lot of the stress comes from developments surrounding the park rather than actually the park. However, there was a strong feeling that there was very little to be done, should be done, to increase the pace of work.
All right.
Wendell, while you're here, I would just like to commend you and your staff for all the great work that you all have created in reference to the development of Lincoln Park. The park is getting a, an amazing use of the community on a daily basis. And so even the, the exercise equipment, that, the outdoor exercise equipment, a lot of the children, you know, they play on it. But as far as the adult usage of the park, it's, you drive by there every day, and you see people walking the trails, and you see people over on the exercise equipment. And the park looks so much better than it has in the past. There's no parking on the grass, and the rail fence that's been placed. It's just been a great development for that whole area. And people as far as 63rd Street come to the park to get an outside exercise, walking in the trails. And so I just want to commend you and your staff, all the great work that you all have done. And I know with the, with the addition of the playground equipment, it's just going to create a greater usage of the whole area. So thank you so much.
We appreciate the recognition, and we also, it's quite gratifying to see the projects that we've built being so heavily used.
Well, this, this is one that I think that the, the park study that's being done right now, they can clearly go to Lincoln Park and look at what it was and what it is now. And it shows that, you know, with a little bit of, you know, working together, that it can make a big difference in reference to the community. And of course, Mr. Couch had a lot to do with that, too.
Yes, he did. Thank you very much, Councilor.
Thank you.
Meg, item 6M?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm somewhat handicapped. I have no glasses today, so I hope I remember what I read last night. I think I'm okay, Skip. I think I can manage. I just wanted to mention that this is the final acceptance of a great project at the Norick Library downtown. When that building was built, the front doors didn't take into account the wind and the cold. And during the wintertime, accessing the library in that front door, open and closing all the time, was really an unpleasant experience for the folks in the library. So we've replaced that door with a round door and a much different entry, and it looks terrific, and I think it functions really well. So a very nice update on our downtown library. Libraries are in the news today.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Nothing on the concurrence docket, which moves us to item 8. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 6. It's an ABC issue at 600 Northwest 23rd Street. Meg?
It is, Mayor. Thank you very much. This is, you know, just another great example. We're going to start seeing lots of these on 23rd Street. New pizza restaurant called Pizza 23. And this is a simple application to be able to serve low-point beer at the restaurant. I would move approval.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on item 8A1? All right. Cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. On item 8A2, which is a zoning case in Ward 3, it's currently a planned unit development, and it would be returned to R1 single-family. Larry?
Yes, Your Honor. I don't believe anybody has signed up on this. This is to take a tract of land, part of a PUD that was to set up for C1, and the property owner would like to go to R1, which is consistent with other properties around there. This area also is in proximity to the South Lakes Park, so it fits in that mode very well. I'd move for approval.
Second?
All right. Comments or questions on item 8A2? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A3 is in Ward 1. The address is 4711 North Tulsa Avenue. It's currently double-A agricultural and a simplified planned unit development, and it would become R1 single-family residential. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. Is anybody here to protest this?
No one has signed up.
Yeah, I believe this is actually going to, even though it's R1, it's going to end up being a school, a Putnam City School. And I move approval.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
This the new grade school they're going to build? Yeah, I heard about that. Didn't know where it was. Now, that's the property back behind the Elch Lodge, goes all the way over there.
So 47th and Tulsa?
Yep.
All right. Item 8A4 is in Ward 1. The address is 4th South Morgan Road. It's currently double-A agricultural. It would become an I-2 moderate industrial. Gary?
Anybody here to protest this? This is changing it to be consistent with a lot of the zoning that's around it, so I move approval.
Do we have a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A5 is in Ward 6. The address is 2644 Southwest 44th Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it would become an O1 limited office district. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a permit to construct a parking lot next door to an insurance office. And this is an area that Pete is intimately familiar with, as am I, on 44th Street, and, you know, a whole stretch of our city where residential houses over time have been converted into businesses. It's a little bit of a complicated corridor, and we have, in some cases, I think we've discouraged all the curb cuts that might occur from this kind of business. But in this case, the zoning is going to allow for an existing office to expand their parking lot, and it will prevent vehicles from stacking up along 44th Street. And so it's actually a safety issue as much as anything else. So I would move approval.
All right. Cast your votes on item 8A5. Passed unanimously. Item 8A6 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 8801 Southwest 59th Street. It's a planned unit development, and it would become a new planned unit development. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up, anybody here to speak to this other than the applicant? Seeing none, I see the applicant present, and we had a conversation before. This has been a very lengthy process. Some of the neighbors had some concerns as this was announced. This is a significant upgrade from what the existing PUD is. This is to be a senior residential area with duplexes. It will have a trail throughout the whole area for the residents to walk through. It'll have a clubhouse inside. It'll be for rental, not for ownership, because the developer is going to operate it. And we talked earlier, on the plat, there is a stipulation that this is going to be a gated community. That does not appear in this, and I believe the applicant has agreed to add that as a, what would it be, Bob? A TE or an amendment to this?
Yes, it'd need to be added to the document.
Okay.
To require.
So I'd like to move for approval of this with the addition of, that this will be a gated community.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item 8A7, a zoning case in Ward 2 at 11600 North Pennsylvania Avenue. It's a planned unit development, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? Item 8A7. All right. How about a motion then?
Move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item 8D. To close a portion of South MacArthur Boulevard near Southwest 59th Street. It's in Ward 3. Larry?
Yes, sir. Has anybody signed up to speak on this? I move for approval.
Cast your votes on item 8B1. Passed unanimously. And item 8B2 is to close a platted alleyway near Northwest 23rd Street and Walker Avenue. Is anyone here wishing to speak on item 8B2?
I would move approval.
Do we have a second? Cast your votes. Item 8C is a public hearing. Would amend the municipal code. Like some wordsmithing going on. Anyone here wishing to speak on item 8C?
Craig will just, or, I'm sorry, Doug Dollar is here to give us just a quick explanation of what we're doing this morning.
Okay. So this, this item is being introduced today. I said it was a public hearing. It's not. It was being introduced, and we'll be setting a public hearing.
That's correct. The item today that has been, we've been working with this with legal and procurement. It really is just some cleanup of our ordinance language. Really have three purposes with the ordinance. The first is to make it clear that a price agreement does not obligate the city, but merely sets the price for goods and services should the city choose to purchase from a vendor. Because a price agreement doesn't obligate the city, then an availability of fund certificate is not required to accompany those council items that you see in your packet. The second purpose, the ordinance, is make it clear that not only must the funds be available when we, when an order is placed under a pricing agreement or when a contract is approved, but goes the next step to require that the funds required for the purchase be encumbered or reserved so they cannot be used for another purpose, which we, we do procedurally now. This just codifies that and puts that into the ordinances. And finally, that the format for the availability of fund certificate that are included with the council agenda items that you see now, we're kind of official, making that an official format so that it's specified in the ordinance. So the, none of the changes by themselves are extremely significant. It's just more, again, like you say, cleanup of the ordinances and clarifying some of our procedures. So be happy to answer any questions you might have on that.
All right. Any questions on item 8C? All right. How about a motion then to move it forward? Cast your votes. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Next, Doug. Item 8D is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8D?
Move the items.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8E is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8E?
I'd like to speak. I want to go to the photo.
Yeah, come on up.
Okay.
Why don't you pull the microphone down, and we'll need your name and address for the record.
2109 Southwest 28. And it was burnt, and I, they said, I got this letter in mail to come up here, but they said I didn't have to come before, because I filed for a burn restoration.
Okay. Well, I need your name first.
Barbara Gilbert.
Okay, Barbara.
And I don't live there now.
Okay. Charles, what can you tell us about this?
Well, I believe it's a room upstairs that burned. There's, there is quite a bit of damage. It's pretty standard. We've given her notice that it has to either be removed or repaired, and I think she's in the process of starting the repair.
What's your plans for it?
Try to repair it, you know, if I can. If I can't, you know.
Okay. What steps are you taking right now to see if you can get this taken care of?
Well, I filed for the permit, and then I'm going to go from there to try to get roofers.
Have you had some expertise? Someone tell you that this can be fixed and?
Not yet. I didn't, I've never had a fire, so I didn't know what to do.
Yeah. When was the fire?
And in August, I, in August.
Okay, a couple of months ago. Meg, this is in Ward six.
Yeah, I mean, I, if you will work closely with our staff, Ms. Gilbert, they'll be happy to help you. Charles, is there a special permit? What is the, the burn permit? What are we talking about?
That's a permit that they look at it to allow them to rebuild it, and there'll somebody that'll come out and look at it from the city to authorize it.
Okay, so we have to determine that it's capable of being rebuilt?
Yes, that's correct.
Rather than being torn down?
Yes.
So, I think we probably ought to leave it on this list, but nothing will happen as long as you're making some progress and you continue to work very closely with our staff. So, if you'll commit to doing that, they'll be happy to work with you.
Yes, I will.
Okay. Very sorry it happened.
You need to stay in touch and work with Charles, okay? As long as we see some progress?
Yes.
You won't have any problem with him or anybody else. But if this just goes on and on, obviously, your neighborhood's not going to be benefiting.
No, I apologize. I apologize for before, because a lot of things happened, and I let it run down.
Well, we understand, and we, I'm sure your neighbors would appreciate the reconstruction process.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks for coming down. All right, how about a motion then on the list of dilapidated structures on item 8D?
We're rehabbing.
Oh, that's right. We've already, that's right. We were just kind of discussing in retrospect, weren't we? All right, we're on to E now, which is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any of those items? All right, how about a motion then? Cast your votes on 8E, and that list passed unanimously. On item 8F, this has to do with the items that we have moved into executive session?
No. Item 8F is actually?
Oh, you're right.
The pay plan for the management employees. We've settled with the IFF back in, I think, in August, and we have come to tentative agreements with both the FOP and AVSMI, and we'll be bringing those to council in the next couple of weeks. And so the fourth group is the management group, and so that's what's being proposed today.
All right. Cast your votes on item 8F. Passed unanimously. Item 8G, I understand we do not need executive session?
I just told you everything you need to know about, about the remainder of the negotiations.
All right. Cast your votes. The strike, struck. All right, item 8H, I understand we do need executive session?
That's correct.
All right. Okay, cast your votes. Item 8H moves to executive session. Item 8I is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8I?
All right, cast your votes.
Passed unanimously. Item nine is claims recommended for approval.
Yes.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under item 9A? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. The first is a preview of our state legislative program that has been through the Legislative Committee, and Jane's here to give us the highlights.
All right. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Jane Abraham, Community and Government Affairs Manager, and I also staff the Council Legislative Committee. And I'm just going to run through our legislative program for 2013 briefly. Maybe? No, I guess, go ahead. Okay. First of all, just to go over the process, which you all are familiar with, but just to kind of run through the, for reference. The city manager asks the department heads for items that they believe require legislative fix, that they've either run across for procedural issues or things that they've run across in the course of doing business for the city. And then those items are considered by the Council Legislative Committee, and the committee makes a recommendation to council, which is what's happening today. And then staff will work with our contracted consultants to work on those items, either to initiate bills, if they're initiative items, or just work the issues that are on behalf of the city. Just as a review, in the 2012 session, we had three initiative items that were signed into law. We restored December elections in odd years for municipalities. We also received, we passed a bill so that we can receive notification from the county if they issue a special event permit that, for an event that's going to take place within the city limits. They weren't required to do that previously, and so we would have special events that we didn't know about. And so this allows us to respond to those special events, and then also to allow public airports to increase the distance for smoking outside of entrances. And this is to address an issue that we had at Will Rogers World Airport, where people were smoking just outside the baggage claim area, and that smoke was coming inside the building. So, we're able to increase that distance outside of the entrance. For the upcoming year, we've got the issues kind of broken down into three categories. First of all, are kind of our priority issues are, they tend to be more umbrella-type of issues, not necessarily a specific bill that we're initiating. The first one is to address local control over local issues. We had several items come up last year that are either addressing the city's ability to implement zoning and planning, that type of thing. And also, what would fall under this is, the council's very interested in having municipalities be able to have control over smoking in public areas, and that kind of falls under this umbrella as well. The second item is transit funding. For the transit systems in the state, that funding has not been increased since 2005. So, we feel that it's time to increase that investment, along with that which has been invested in roads and bridges, et cetera, to also increase the investment in transit. And the third item is support for the American Indian Cultural Center. Last year, there was a bill to have $40 million in a bond issue at the state level, which would be matched by $40 million, which was raised from the, from the private sector and also from the city. We were part of that effort. And so we just, we support the effort to have funding from the state to finish the project. We just feel that that's very important and needs to be completed. Under our initiative issues this year, the first one is to try to address the height restriction. Right now, it's state law, the, it's 12 inches, and we would like to decrease that to eight inches, to decrease that cap. Second, to allow cleaning and mowing for those, cleaning and mowing of property for parcels that are less than 10 acres in areas that are zoned double-A. Right now, we've got residential, residential areas, but they're still zoned double-A, and so our height restrictions for tall grass and weeds don't apply in those areas. And then third, to restore the deleted sections of the Workers' Comp Code, and this is a repeat from last year. Two years ago, the Workers' Comp Code was completely rewritten, and the cap for political subdivisions that had been limited to the Tort Claims Act was taken out. And so we just want to restore that section into the Workers' Comp Code. The fourth item is to amend the Bus Passenger Safety Act of 1980 to comply with the new open carry law that was passed last year. And the next item is, is to implement a statutory lien program for solid waste and stormwater drainage services. Right now, we're able, like, for example, if we mitigate tall grass and weeds on a property, we're able to place a lien on that property to recoup those costs. In areas where we provide solid waste and stormwater drainage services, but not water services, if we have unpaid bills in those areas, we can't cut off service because we can't stop collecting the trash. And so we're, we have a lot of difficulty in collecting those unpaid bills. So, this would just implement the system that we have right now for mitigation of tall grass and weeds, for also unpaid bills for solid waste and stormwater drainage. And then the last one is to clarify when and where a police officer may serve a misdemeanor arrest warrant. Currently, if police are conducting business between the hours of midnight and 6:00 AM, they're unable to serve a misdemeanor arrest warrant. They can do, I'm sorry, they can serve an arrest warrant for a felony, but not for a misdemeanor. And so that would just allow them, if they're somewhere already, to serve those warrants. In terms of our support issues on the state level, again, there's a, there will be a group that will be initiating legislation to allow municipalities to control their own, to implement public smoking laws that are stricter than state law, which we're currently preempted from doing. And so we support that effort. We also support retaining tools for economic development, so TIF programs, the Quality Jobs Act and things of that nature. We support a long-term water supply for central Oklahoma. And also, there will, is, there are efforts to shore up the pension systems for the police and fire pensions, which are controlled on the state level. And so we support addressing those, that issue in a balanced way. And then also, there will be efforts, I believe, coming out of Tulsa to address vacant and abandoned housing in urban areas, and we support that as well. Moving on to our federal legislative issues, also to wrap up just for 2012, the transportation bill that was passed this summer, MAP 21, contained our 100-bus coalition language, which we had been working for, for several years, and Congressman Langford helped us with this. And now, bus systems with fewer than 100 buses can use federal funds for operations, which we were precluded from doing in the past. The other major issue that we worked on last year and continue to work on is the Marketplace Fairness Act, which will implement, which will allow us to collect sales tax on internet purchases and make that consistent throughout the nation. And moving forward to 2013, the federal issues don't change a lot, really, from year to year, so I won't, you know, go through every one of them. Again, the Marketplace Fairness Act, that's a major initiative that the city is working on in supporting funding for transportation project. The use of the NCIC database for background checks, currently, we can use them for, use that for public safety employees, but we're not able to use it for civilian employees that may be in sensitive positions. And so we're working with, and that's more of, it's not really a legislative issue, it's more of an agency level, where we're working with agencies at the federal level to be able to have access to that. And again, you know, the other things are fairly typical. We just, we, of course, support Dinkley Air Force Base, a major employer of ours, and want to keep that, keep that solvent and working well in Oklahoma City, and supporting for the airport funding and FAA operations, and of course, our grant programs that we're, we use for economic development and other programs. If anybody has any questions, ready to answer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Jane, on the state issue particularly, was there any attempt to work with either some of the larger cities of the state directly or through OML to coordinate what we're doing?
Yes, absolutely. We work very closely with OML and attempt, I serve on their legislative committee, and so we submit our legislative issues to them and have them help us to work them as they go through the process. And then also for support issues, yeah, we work very closely with them. It depends on what the issue is. Sometimes, in the past, for example, we've worked very closely also with ACOG on issues dealing with 911 and that type of thing, that they may be very involved in, as well as transportation, so.
The second question, Jane, is on the wish list, the umbrella projects, I think, at the state level, would there be any advantage for one of the municipalities or OML to draft some kind of language? I'm afraid we sometimes get things we don't really ask for out of legislation, but if we had a bill that spelled out specifically what we wanted, would that make it, let's get it through the legislature, rather than just a list of ideas that we think are good?
I think so. I mean, I think we've, we've gone that route in the past with specific items. For example, OML worked very hard to have part of the state sales tax dedicated to transportation. That was several years ago. So, I think if there's something specific, then we do work to draft language and actually have. And we do that for all of our initiative items. We draft language.
All those ones on the umbrella list ultimately would be reduced to specific bills if we asked?
That's correct. The initiative items, yes.
Thank you.
Jane?
Point of clarification on the legislative issue of amending the Bus Passenger Safety Act?
Yes.
To comply with the open carry?
Uh-huh.
What is that?
Currently, the Bus Passenger Safety Act lists all this, people are not allowed to carry guns on public buses, and all of the different types of carry are specifically listed in the act. For example, it lists concealed carry, but it didn't, when open carry was implemented, that particular part of the statute was not also amended to be updated with the current law. So, there's just, there's kind of an inconsistency right now in the wording in the statute, and so that would correct that inconsistency.
So, at the present time, a person can, if he complies with the open carry law, can ride on a public bus?
That's our concern, because it's not spelled out.
I don't think, we don't think it's clear, Councilman, is the issue. We don't think it's clear, and because there's conflicting laws out there, so we wanted to make sure that those provisions were brought into harmony.
So, in the meantime, are we going to have to wait for a whole legislative session to get some clarity as to whether that a person can be arrested for riding a public bus with the open carry?
We hope we don't have to address that. We hope we don't have to address that.
But in the event that we do have to address it, would we continue to prohibit bringing guns to open or concealed on a bus?
Rick Smith can answer this question, but I think the answer is?
Well, I doubt it's Rick.
Open carry on buses? Is Rick Smith giving you a legal opinion on that?
The opinion that we've received thus far is, since the law is not clear relative to that, that we have not challenged anybody. If they get on a bus, it's not our intention to at this point in time. If they get on, we have not had any problems thus far.
In the event we do have a problem, though, we're just going to ignore it because the law's not clear, or are we going to try to enforce it?
My advice would be that the later enacted law was the open carry law, and even if there's a conflict with the prior law, that they probably, it probably would be construed that the later law controls. So, if you want to go to a different issue, I can get Rick Smith down here to address this.
No, I don't, it's, to me, it's less a legal issue than it is a practical issue. And we prohibit sealed weapons on the bus.
It's actually a?
And, may I finish?
Yes.
So, whether we're legally clear to do it or not, because there is this confusion, I think we ought to do it. Anyway, it's just a opinion.
What are you training your drivers to do?
At this point in time, we're not challenging anybody if they come on.
Okay, so that's the
And we prohibit sealed weapons on the bus.
It's actually a...
And may I finish?
Yes.
So whether we're legally clear to do it or not, because there is this confusion, I think we ought to do it. Anyway, it's just a opinion.
What are you training your drivers to do?
At this point in time, we're not challenging anybody if they come on.
Okay, so that's the current policy?
Let them on.
We're not challenging their right to carry it because we're confused about the apparent conflict between the state law and our regulations.
It is a legal issue, because if they have a right to do it and you arrest them, then that's a false arrest. So it is a legal issue.
I think that's a chance worth taking in order to protect the public, but anyway.
Yeah. So you're saying that we can't, you can't prohibit guns on the bus, but you can prohibit guns in the city hall?
That's correct. That's our understanding of the law.
Yes, the law is clear on that.
So they spell that out?
Yes.
That municipalities can prohibit firearms from inside a municipal building?
Correct.
Or government building?
Right.
Okay.
Inside city government facilities, you can prohibit them.
Okay.
Yeah, Larry, then Meg?
On another issue, Jane, on the state issues under Support Issues Number Two, retaining tools for economic development.
Yes.
We have in there, and I'd like to see if I'm correct, Jim, "The city supports increased scrutiny, transparency, and openness in evaluating the effectiveness of the state's economic development incentives." And there was a piece on television last night that I just caught a glimpse of, talking about the State Quality Jobs Act, which evidently has no clawback provisions on going after situations where a company commits to so many jobs, gets paid for those jobs, and then turns around and ceases those jobs. Whereas our economic development efforts under Councilman Ryan's committee has clawback provisions in there. And I think we should be aware of that as we go along, that I think we have a much better program going than the state, and that monitoring what they do or don't do, and that would all fit under this particular category, would it not?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Meg?
Jane, this is on another subject. Are you, are we clear on what the proposed legislation might be about abandoned and neglected urban housing?
I know that the city of Tulsa pursued legislation to address that last year. I think Senator Scott was the legislator who had introduced that legislation. It's my understanding that it would allow cities to set up a program where we could actually purchase abandoned housing to be able to mitigate those areas and to control -- take control from an ownership standpoint in terms of purchasing and set up that type of program. It was not successful last year, and it's hard to say if it would be again this year. But having it as a support item allows us kind of the flexibility if there's another city that has something that we would support, we're able to help them with that.
I think we've had this issue before, where we've supported something that we didn't know what it looked like, and we want to be careful.
Absolutely.
That it is something that we really want to support.
Yes.
Sounds like a great program. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions with Jane and the items on the legislative agendas? Yeah, Rick?
Richard Smith, City Attorney's Office. I think there was a question about whether we're allowing open carry on buses. Unfortunately, right now, there's a state statute that prohibits the concealed carry on buses. The legislature did not amend that to prohibit the open carry on buses. Our opinion is, is that the general controls over the, or the specific controls over the general, therefore, they're allowed to have open carry on buses until we actually get the state statute amended to prohibit it.
Okay. So if a person, if a person concealed his weapon on the bus, then he would be in violation of the law?
Of the state statute, yes, sir.
Not the city ordinance?
The city cannot do anything to regulate firearms, according to our opinion, based on the state statute, making it preemptive. The state says they're preempting the field, so we can't do anything.
Okay.
So we need to ask the legislature to amend the Bus Passenger Safety Act to prohibit the open carry of firearms on buses.
Okay. How does that apply to the federal government? Do you know?
It can't, they cannot prohibit the federal government, assuming it's an issue that the federal government has jurisdiction over. So the federal government could do something different than what the state is doing.
But presently, if a person is riding a bus such as the Greyhound and interstate commerce, I mean, transportation, that would be federal jurisdiction. And if a person was on the bus under an open carry, you know, assumption that he has the right or she has the right to open carry, does the federal government have any mandate as it relates to that?
I have not looked. I was asked about what the cop could do, not Greyhound. I would assume that the federal government would have something to say about it, but I don't know. I haven't looked.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Rick.
All right. Any other comments or questions on the legislative agenda? Yeah, Pete?
One of the things that I think going forward we really need to do is, I think there's a gulf between us and the legislature that we could do some things to overcome by trying to make more contact, trying to get together with our state legislators more often. I've had some experience in doing that, and it has worked out very well in terms of my ability now to talk to them, just because I've taken some steps totally outside of the lobbying or trying to, the advocacy stuff, trying to do that. And I would recommend it to all of us, because I think oftentimes I see legislators voting in a way that is obviously contrary to what the city wants, and I think they just don't, many of them don't have a relationship with the city that would give them the information that they need in order to make the kind of decisions we'd like to see them make. And I don't know of any other way to do it than personal contact with them. I mean, I just, I think it's priceless to try to interface with them on a personal basis and sometimes outside the context of advocacy, just to try to build some relationships so that when we need things, we don't, we're not asking strangers to help us. So just a comment.
Any other comments or questions on our legislative agenda? All right, Jane, thank you. We need to vote on these, to adopt these as our legislative agendas. I'll take a motion on item 10A, and this is the state legislative program. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 10B is for our federal legislative program. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Items from council. Pat, you want to get us started?
Nothing, Your Honor. I'm discouraged with my success so far this morning.
All right, Skip.
First, I would just like to thank all the staff at Edwards Elementary School. Last Wednesday, there was a historical program recognizing the Edwards family and Mr. Edwards, who was the founder and developer of Edwards Edition, and consequently, the school named after him. And a historical plaque was established at the school, and the unveiling of it was last Wednesday. And I would just like to thank one person in particular, and of course, that's Ms. Hamilton, the principal of the school, and all of her staff. In two days, they were able to get, because they had just come back from spring break, but in two days, they had all of the students to participate in some part of the history of the development of the area, the background of Mr. and Mrs. Edwards. And it was just a fantastic presentation of children engaged in the program and actually presenting part of the history of the school and the area in which they attend. And one person that I want to recognize, that didn't get really recognized last Wednesday, was Ms. Thelma Parks. As you all know, Ms. Parks served on the Oklahoma City School Board for years and, of course, a strong educator in the city of Oklahoma City. But it was because of Ms. Parks, several years ago, after I got elected to the council, who came to me and was very concerned about the children at Edwards Elementary School in reference to their safety, because it's right there at 10th and Grand, and you had all these trucks that come off of I-35. And before school and after school, it was just a traffic congestion. And she came down to the council and sat with me and the pastor of the church and Dennis Clowers and his staff. And the great work between our city, the Department of Transportation, and the school board in reference to redesigning the traffic in front of Edwards Elementary School has just created a beautiful sight for that corner and the safety concerns for the children that attend there. And since then, I have been, you know, thoroughly involved in trying to do whatever I can from the city's perspective to try to upgrade and elevate the interest and the safety of the children there at the school. And so, Ms. Thelma Parks, if you're listening, if you're watching, I want to thank you for being a champion for those students at Edwards Elementary School. And for our staff, all the individuals at this part of the MAPS program that participated in this plaque issue, and Ms. Ingrisal and Debbie Martin, and one lady that I think gets absolutely no credit for what she do and the amount of what she do for the city of Oklahoma City. And what she did in reference to helping me in this project is Frances and her staff. For almost three months, I just worded her, and they copied articles from old newspapers and just, you know, one of those articles became the focal point of the presentation. And everybody was like, where did you get that? You know, and it came from Frances' office, where someone years ago cut out every news article in reference to whatever happened at the city of Oklahoma City. And I found one that dated back to 1937 that really started the beginning of the school. And so Frances, thank you and your staff for all the work that you have done and helping me in reference to that. So to Edwards Elementary School, you are my heroes.
Meg?
Too quick, thank you, Mayor. I just would like to congratulate Georgie Rasko and her staff, Nicole Franklin, who I think is their board chair at Neighborhood Alliance, had a great event last week. And a particular shout-out to Bruce Hall from the Miller Neighborhood, who got the Neighbor of the Year award. Very well deserved. And I think last week, we approved a revocable permit for an event that took place on Sunday down at the farmer's market. It was a sort of outdoor agrarian food fest, and there were farmers' stalls and produce. There were games and activities for the children. There was really a big crowd down in that neighborhood. It was just great to see. And so I hope we're going to continue to see some activities develop down in that area.
All right. Thanks, Meg. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just like to thank the neighbors in Musgrave-Pennington for the hospitality last night at their neighborhood meeting. Very encouraged by the efforts that they're undertaking to resurrect and re-stimulate their neighborhood patrol as a crime-fighting tool in the neighborhood, and my best wishes to them on that. And then Sunday afternoon, I had an opportunity with my family to come down to the Myriad Gardens Park, and I was amazed at the population of people that were in that park on a Sunday afternoon. It was a beautiful day, people playing sports, the children's area was full, feeding the ducks down in the water area was, and it's a great venue, I found, for taking pictures. People were down there taking family pictures. And so it just was an encouragement that if you build a better park like that downtown, people will come downtown. And, gosh, a couple of years ago, you couldn't find a soul downtown on a Sunday afternoon. Here, the place was just packed. Thank you, Your Honor.
Gary? All right. City manager reports.
There's nothing listed, but... There's nothing on the agenda, but earlier on the consent document, there was an item, it was item 6U, and it was a request for proposals to be advertised for a bid management system. We want to talk to you a little bit about that this morning, just give a little bit about what we're trying to accomplish. It's always good to have Frances give a presentation.
Yeah. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Frances Kersey from the city clerk's office, and I'd like to introduce, Craig Keith was our attorney on the project to prepare the request for proposals. And the IT project team was Amy Russell, who couldn't be here today, and Alan Kelly, who's running the PowerPoint this morning. But I just want to, for those of you who have never seen what a set of plans and specs looks like, these are the plans, and these are the specifications. And, well, for the 31 years that I've been here, the contractors come in, pick up the plans and specs, and then after the project's over, they return the plans and specs. And it's a very cumbersome project, as you can tell when you're dealing with probably 20 projects a week. So about two years ago, and this was at the request of the Contractors Association, we reduced the plans and specs to where now they're available on CD. And that has been wonderful for the contractors. But they still have to come in, they have to pay a deposit for it, but we don't ask that they return it, so they just have to make one trip. But now, since we made those steps, we wanted to go a little bit further. And we want to have a totally electronic bid management system, taking it from after you all approve the plans and specs, or the trustees approve the plans and specs, then we are, we're going to have everything in the bid management system until the bids This is a solution for the management of the project, which will be inclusive from the approval of the specs to the receipt of the bids. We're looking at eliminating, at increasing the efficiencies and streamlining the work processes and controlling the data that we have. We want it to be a customer-friendly system where the contractor can sit in his office at his desk and review the plans and specs, print them if he wants to, and complete all of the forms, the affidavits and the statements that are required by law to be submitted. He signs those, has them notarized, and submits them in the system. And then they're received in the clerk's office as a legally binding bid. We want it to maintain those documents for at least five years in a central repository. And that way, we'll all be using the same documents, which we have problems with now because there are several different versions of plans and specs going around. And there will be no cost to the contractor or the vendor to use this system. They will merely need to register in the system and print whatever they need in their own time. And this is giving us the opportunity to standardize the bidding, the bidding forms to where all the cities and trusts will be utilizing the same forms that legal's going to prepare for the system. And this will eliminate defect errors that we have occasionally in having to reject a bid. Everything's going to be standardized.
More often than you would think.
Yes.
They just, we have so many unit prices that they, there's a lot of errors that come in.
And we're going to include RFPs in this system, too. We're hoping that it will encompass not only construction plans and specs, but also our procurement materials and our proposals. We will continue to accept hard copies also, because not everyone's going to have access to that or even want to use it. So for the time being, we will be accepting hard copies also. We're not going to eliminate any bids with this process. It's going to give us the ability to verify information, like if they're pre-qualified, if they attended the pre-bid meeting. All of this will be done automatically in the system, and we won't be relying on last-minute information from the department. And we're also going to have information such as the estimated cost of the project, the plan holder's list, who the project manager is, and their phone number. So all that information will be there for the contractors if they have any questions. And the advantages of electronic bidding, where advanced reporting features, we'll be able to know who is bidding consistently, who is not bidding, you know, we'll have be able to know who is bidding consistently, who is not bidding, you know, we'll have a list of the contractors and the vendors to know what they're looking at, what they're printing, and what they're bidding on, and their bid history. Analytics, we'll be able to know the cost of a widget over a five-year period, and this is very important to our project engineers when they're estimating the cost of the project. And this will be very beneficial that they can go back and do an estimate over five years of what the cost of a commodity was. We'll also have workflow capabilities for routing. In other words, if a vendor, we know that they did print the specifications, but they didn't turn in a bid, well, we'll have the ability then to ask them, why didn't you bid on this project? And that will help us develop our specifications in the future to know why some people are not bidding and some aren't, and we just don't have that ability today in knowing who is downloading the specifications. Also, we will have email notifications, and this is going to be very beneficial for addendums that are issued, confirmation receipts that they did receive the addendum. We'll also use the system for those materials and purchases that are under $25,000 that we're required to get quotes on. So, we will have a list of all the companies who sell a certain commodity, and we'll be able to ask for quotes from them just automatically with one email and get quotes back. So, I think it's going to be a win-win for everybody, a win-win for the city and its trusts, and for the contractors and the vendors. The proposed bid opening is going to be December 4th. We do have four interested vendors who are chomping at the bit for us to get this out on the street. It's going to be, we're anticipating significant savings in staff hours in processing the bids, citywide and trust-wide.
And a lot of the vendors want this. A lot of the contractors are used to doing this, to do the state's system like this, and they're used to doing it this way. And so, some of the contractors have been actually asking for this.
How soon will we have it?
How soon?
Will it be in place, working?
It's probably going to take a year after we receive the proposals until it's online and operating like we want to.
Measure this program by the number of staff hours involved?
That'd be one measure.
That would be one measure.
Or that? Would it be reported? Do you feel for the ethics?
Yes.
We can do that, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Francis?
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Any other city manager reports? Citizens to be heard. Seeing in empty chambers, we will retire to executive session.
The council has returned from executive session and after reviewing the performance and salaries and market conditions for the three positions in which we determine the salaries and benefits, we have come to the following conclusions: We will be giving our, each of our three employees a $3,000, I'm sorry, a 3% step raise and then a 3.61% cost of living raise. Those numbers would change the salaries to the following: For the municipal councillor, the amount per hour would be $83.23, for a total salary of $173,779.57. For the municipal auditor, the hourly salary would be $67.82. The annual salary would be $141,618.8. And for the city manager, the hourly wage would be $109.87. The annual salary would be $229,407.43. This will put them very near the market rate of our peer cities, in most cases between 1% and 2% above them.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion on item 3B. In which position is that? I'll have... Okay, this is for the city manager's position. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously.
We have a motion for item 3C for the city manager.
Cast your votes. Pass unanimously.
We have a motion for item 3D for the auditor.
Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Thanks everyone. Word adjourned.